Good. Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is the June 13th, 2018 meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown. We are going to begin it with the Pledge of Allegiance, and you are all invited to join in.
My Pledge of Allegiance.
To the side of the United States of America. To the Republic for which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Planning Board. The Planning Department would like to recommend that the following items be recessed because the applicants are not ready to be heard at this time. Under zoning petitions, number one, 2012-04 Storybook Homes, Nescotet. Number two, 2012-02 Carlson Associates, Kings Park. Number three, 2010-06 KBC Holdings. Under waiver requests, four, number 773 Scholar States Comac. Five, 911A Glenhill Northern. Under 288 application, Lizetta Street. And under final subdivision, number 1136 Map of Open Meadow.
Thank you. Is there anybody present who wishes to be heard on any of those matters that were just read regarding which the Planning Department is requesting be adjourned or recessed? Seeing none, a motion, please.
A move to be recessed matters one through seven as read.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? So recessed.
The first item under new hearings and decisions is extension of preliminary approval for number 1057.1 Richwood Estates in Hopgog. The applicant requests an extension of conditional preliminary approval for the subdivision known as number 1057.1 Map of Richwood Estates. The preliminary map of number 1057.1 Map of Richwood Estates was granted preliminary approval by the Planning Board on November 8th, 2015. The preliminary approval is valid for a period of 180 days that expired on May 18th, 2016. Since that date, this application has received two 90-day extensions and three six-month extensions, the last which expired on May 18th, 2018. The applicant submitted the request for the extension on May 15th, 2018. The applicant states in their letter dated May 9th, 2018, that they are currently under contract with the County of Suffolk to sell the subject property for open space and parkland purposes. They expect the closing to take place within the next 60 days. The Planning Department has no objection to the applicant's request. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Blank 2018, Extension of Conditional Preliminary Approval for Number 1057 Map of Richwood Estates. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request to extend the preliminary approval for Number 1057.1 Map of Richwood Estates. Now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby grants a retroactive six-month extension of time to the preliminary approval for the subdivision known as Number 1057.1 Map of Richwood Estates, beginning May 18th, 2018 to November 18th, 2018.
Anybody present on behalf of the applicant?
Attorney for the applicant, Julia Viola, from Zilman Ballin.
Good.
100 Motto Parkway, Hopgog, New York. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. At this time, we are requesting an extension of the approval due to the fact, as you heard from the recommendations, that we are currently under contract with the County of Suffolk to sell the subject property for open space or parkland purposes. The Suffolk County has finally received the checks for the closing, and the closing at this point will most likely take place in the next two or three weeks.
Okay.
And for that reason, the applicant respectfully requests an extension of conditional preliminary approval. Thank you.
Well, thank you, which is what the Planning Department's resolution that he just read will effectuate. Anybody in the audience wish to be heard on this matter? Sir, please come up to the microphone, give your name and address.
Yes. My name is Edward Sanders, 370 Ridgefield Road, Hopgog, New York. I represent the Northfield Wood Civic Association. We're the ones who originally had asked that this property be purchased by the county for the intended use of open space, and we are 100 percent behind this, and we've been following it very closely, and we understand that two to three weeks max, and they should be closed on it. So we're in favor of giving the extension to help them out.
Hopefully, it'll be extended, and then they'll close, and we'll have a happy ending for everybody.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard on this one? Okay. Seeing none, a motion, please.
In the matter of Number 1057.1 Map of Richwood Estates, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Hearing is closed. Now on the resolution, please.
In the matter of 1057.1 Map of Richwood Estates, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? So adopted.
The next item is a telecommunications application, TC 2018-01. This was recessed from last hearing. We do not have the SECA determination, so we should recess it to the next hearing.
So we're not ready to vote on it yet? We don't have the SECA, so the recommendation is to recess it to the next hearing? Is there a motion for that?
Do we have it? That would be the July?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. Okay. All right. In the matter of special exception petition, TC 218-01, I move that we recess the public hearing to the July 18th, 2018 meeting of the Planning Department, Planning Board.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? So recessed.
The next item is a preliminary subdivision, Number 1169 Core Land Division. I provided a letter from the applicant.
Yes. What the letter reflect, I have in my hands a letter dated June 6th, 2018, from Donald J. King, Ray Core Land Division, Number 1169, addressed to Agnes Vaughn, clerk to the Planning Board. It states as follows, "Please adjourn the Core Land Division presently on the Planning Board calendar for June 13th, 2018, to September 12th, 2018. Very few of yours, Donald J. King," who, as we know, has appeared as the applicant's attorney. So Mr. King is requesting that the matter be adjourned to September 12th. Is there a motion to recess the matter to September 12th?
In the matter of Number 1169 Map of Core Land Division, I move that we recess the public hearing to the September 12th, 2018 meeting of the Planning Board.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? So recessed.
The next item is a preliminary subdivision, Number 1146 Foxwood Estates in Smithtown. The applicant requests preliminary approval to subdivide a 3.2, subdivide 3.2 acres into four lots. This application was last heard at the April 11th, 2018 Planning Board meeting. At that meeting, the Planning Board passed a procedural motion instructing staff to the board to prepare an alternative resolution to deny the preliminary layout based on nine reasons. The board then recessed the hearing to the April 25th, 2018, and then at the applicant's request, recessed the hearing again to June 13th, 2018. A copy of the Planning Department's advisory memorandum dated September 13th, 2017, and including proposed resolutions to adopt a SECA negative declaration and conditionally approve. The preliminary layout is attached for your consideration. Also attached, please find an alternative resolution to deny the preliminary layout prepared by Paul Sabatino II, counsel to the Planning Board. So the September 8th, 2017 meeting prepared by the Planning Department is in the record. So.
The September, did the, you mean the resolution and the recommendation as the matter was originally counted?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that was read into the record. Then I can read in the alternative resolution.
Perhaps before we go that far, I have a motion to make.
Well, before we do that, my suggestion would be, for purposes of clarity, if we get to it, and certainty, since if we are going to read in the alternative resolution, it is long, relatively long, the Planning Board's proposed resolution and the SECA resolution are relatively short, I think we should read everything in.
Okay.
If we're going to read it, then people can vote up or down on the SECA. If they vote up, if we get enough votes yes on the SECA, then any member can vote up or down on the merits. But I think for a complete record, and given the fact that the Planning Board's approval resolution, Planning Department's approval resolution is relatively short, that we should read everything in.
Okay. What would you like me to?
Mr. Chase has a motion.
Yes. Certain questions have come to light regarding the proposal, and I would like to make a motion at the appropriate time to recess the public hearing as well as table the resolution till the next meeting. I would like to go on site to look at the property once more. I don't know if any of my colleagues on the board wish to avail themselves of that, but that would be the purpose of my motion, and I think could probably dispense with the reading of the resolutions, because perhaps the one that I've been authoring with counsel perhaps could be revised.
I would second that. There's some changes here that I wanted to see myself.
You mean in the, in the alternate resolution?
Right. I've been above both of them. The curb cut, and then the recommendations from traffic.
Well, just so it could be clear, before we have any vote on anything, we have a first resolution regarding the SECA, which is just whether or not the matter should be declared SECA negative. Is there any issues you have with that?
No.
Okay. The second resolution is a resolution that was on the calendar before, previously, that is the Planning Department's recommended resolution for approval. Do you have any issues with that? Not that whether you want to agree to it or not, just with the way the resolution is worded. Because whether you agree with it or not, it's going to happen when we vote on it, whether that's tonight or another night.
Not any problems.
So you have issue, you have questions you want to look into regarding the wording of the last resolution, which is pretty long.
Right. And then the recommendations from the, a couple of the departments here regarding, like I said, traffic and trees, and I just want to take another look myself.
All right. Well, before we vote, Mr. Tramaco is here. We know he represents the applicant. We'll give him an opportunity to be heard on the matter. As you heard, Mr. Tramaco, Mr. Chase has indicated he wishes to make another site inspection, and Mr. Uvazak has some questions that he would like answered regarding the alternate resolution, which may, if it is read into the record tonight, will be read into the record for the very first time. And I think Mr. Chase also indicated he might request some revisions, which may even shorten it, maybe, maybe not, in that resolution, so that if and when we vote on it, whether it's tonight or another night, those who may be in favor of it can have the language that they're comfortable with in the approval resolution, and those who may be opposed to it can have the language that they're comfortable with in the denial resolution. So that's what I believe the basis of Mr. Chase's motion is going to be.
Yes.
And Mr. Tramaco, since you're the applicant's attorney, please appear, and feel free to chime in. Give us your.
Vincent Chase Tramaco, 1038 West Jericho Turnpike, Smithtown, New York. I represent the applicant, Foxwood Estates. I'm not sure I understand what Mr. Chase's motion was. I think the first part of it was he wanted to look at the site again. Is that?
As well as give some thoughtful consideration to, you know, both resolutions, and I don't know if we've heard any members of the public. I know we have in October of 14, when they presented a petition containing several dozen names. But I would, I'd like to have the opportunity to go through the site once more and also discuss the resolution. I know some of my colleagues have seen this resolution for the first time when it was placed into the packet. They haven't had the opportunities I have to work with counsel on this. So in order to give this thoughtful consideration, I think a motion to table to the next meeting would be appropriate.
Well, just so we can all be clear, Mr. Tramaco, what I understand is that Mr. Chase has clearly indicated he wishes to go out to the property again. That's number one. Number two, Mr. Uvazak has some questions I think that he wants to have answered regarding the alternate resolution, which is over four pages long, and maybe he's seen it for the first time recently.
Right.
I don't know that. Mr. Chase also, who was, I think, the one who made the motion for the alternate resolution to begin with, also appears to want to speak to the author of the resolution, who I understand is Mr. Sabatino, our counsel, about some of the wording in there. So it appears that at least two of the board members have questions and may be requesting some revisions in that alternate resolution, that they wish to have the wording changed, perhaps something added, something deleted, before we vote on it. So basically, what they're saying is they're not ready to vote on it tonight.
And I have been to the site twice, but I have never had the opportunity to go beyond the fence, because the gate, I believe, is closed, and I would like to be able to go examine the rear of the property.
And Mr. Chase, would your motion be to recess it to the next hearing, which we just heard was July 18th?
Yes.
So it would be for another month?
I thought, oh, there's no other meeting in June?
Nope.
So that's it.
This is it. We're meeting once June, once July, once August.
I just want to consult with my client for a minute.
You should say that.
If he's going on your property, yes. I, I just spoke with, as you can see, Mrs. Perna, and she doesn't have any objection, but if Mr. Chase or any other members want to examine the property, they should first call, and I'm sure he, Mr. Chase wouldn't walk on the property without getting permission.
Call your office or call someone else?
I can give Mrs. Perna's number, and he can call directly.
Maybe you can do that after the meeting, if you want to do that.
Yeah. Okay. That's.
The number to be broadcast out, I'm sure.
I mean, otherwise, you know, who knows what would happen? The other question that I have is, in the interest of getting this done, and I understand that some of the members haven't read the resolution, if there's going to be a meeting, I think it has to be a public meeting.
Well, I don't think anybody's talking about a meeting. I believe under the open meetings law, if two members of the board meet, that counts as a meeting under the open meetings law, which is why a lot of times when people, actually, it's either, no, I think it's three.
Three.
Three members, I'm sorry. Which is three, I think constitute a meeting, which is why when people go to look at the property, they go by themselves or perhaps with only one other person, so that no one can say that it's a meeting and it should have been on the record.
Right.
So I think that all the members of the board are aware of the fact that if there are more than two of them present to discuss the matter, it is covered by the open meetings law. So therefore, I'm pretty confident that if any of them do discuss it with themselves or with Mr. Sabatino, that they understand that only two of them can be present, otherwise it has to be covered by the open meetings law. I think they're aware of that.
Right. And I agree with that.
I don't think that there was going to be any, I don't think anybody contemplated two or three people sitting down with Mr. Sabatino. I think people individually have questions, and they'll contact him at their convenience.
That's fine.
Hopefully, if they have questions about the wording, and some of the wording is going to be changed, the only thing I hope is that it gets done relatively soon enough so that everybody can have it in front of them sufficiently in advance of the next date, so that we can vote one way or the other on it.
I have another question.
Yes.
When was the proposed, I'll call it a counter resolution, given to, I got a copy of it, I think, early this week.
That I don't know.
Was that?
I don't know, but to me, that, I'm not really sure of the answer to that. The, my, my only concern is that two of the members have expressed questions about it and wish further to discuss it with counsel and perhaps revise it. When they got it, I'm not really sure, and.
And the only reason why he asks is because this subdivision's been going on for five or six years.
We understand that. We understand that. The case has been to court. We understand that. But, you know.
I'd like to get it done one way or the other.
So would I, and I think everybody else would too, but I believe that the requests, the nature of the requests warrant that I think they at least be given an opportunity to have, explore what they want to have explored.
And I don't make useless objections anyway, so I don't have a problem with it. I'd like a copy of the revised, whatever happens with this counter resolution, I'd like a copy.
I think that's fair enough. Can the Planning Department get Mr. Tramaco one?
Yeah, and Planning did send me the other one. I want it as soon as possible, because I want the opportunity, obviously, to read it.
Yeah, I think that's only fair.
And to comment on it.
I think, I think the proper procedure would be for those members of the board who have questions about the alternate resolution to contact Mr. Sabatino about it, address their questions to him, see if perhaps those questions can be addressed by him, if they have questions about what this means or what that means. If they have suggestions or requests for revisions, make those to him too, individually, of course. And then after those requests and requests for revisions are acted on, and we have a revised, if that's what we have, it may stay exactly the same, I don't know, revised alternate resolution, I think it's only fair that you get a copy sufficiently in advance of the hearing, just like everybody else should get a copy sufficiently in advance of the hearing, so that when July 18th comes, we'll have the vote on the SECA. If there are three votes to vote SECA negative, then that doesn't mean that those people are supporting the application, it just means that it's SECA negative, and then we move on to the next step, where all the five board members are free to vote for the approval resolution or the denial resolution as they see fit, and then those who have each position will be able to have language in the resolution that supports their position that they're comfortable with. There'll be a vote that day, hopefully, and then that'll be that.
At least the SECA will be held in suspended animation this time. And I'm happy about that.
I can't predict the future, what's going to happen, but everybody should be aware that.
They're going to vote, so one way or the other.
If everybody, if any of the members vote yes on the SECA negative, that doesn't mean they're voting in favor of the merits.
I understand, sure.
It just allows us to vote on the merits.
Right.
And then all five people can vote on the merits. Who wants to vote for, can vote for. The resolution will state the reasons for that. Those who want to vote for denial can vote for denial, and the alternate resolution will state the reasons for that. And then the vote is what it is, and then whatever happens after that is whatever happens in the normal procedure of these types of stuff.
And one further thing, Mr. Chairman, since some of the board members are going to go to the property again, and obviously, Mrs. Perna will give her phone number, there were two variances that we requested. One was setback, front yard setback from 50 to 40 feet. If the board's members sees fit, I would really like them to look at that property, because we can go back 50-foot setback and still have, on the smaller slot, almost 100 feet of rear yard. So it was for the convenience and the benefit of the surrounding neighbors, as well as the betterment of us, to have a deeper backyard and a shorter front yard. But we don't have to do that if the board feels we don't need or doesn't want to grant that, because we have the space. The other thing is.
That's something I, anything, that or anything else that you wish to bring to the attention of any of the board members in advance of them going out, that you'd like for them specifically to look at, now's the time to let us know.
That's for lots two, three, and four?
I'm sorry?
That's for which lots?
The back lots, yeah.
But also, if there are going to be any changes in the proposed approval resolution, again, I would just ask that that all be discussed with Planning Department staff, to make sure that they're on board with it, and also that that revised language, if there is that, is distributed to everybody in advance. So then, we don't have the same situation with the approval resolution that we have with the, with the denial resolution, and then we're back in August as opposed to July.
Mr. Chairman, with respect to the variances, the variances would not be approved until final approval.
So it wouldn't be something that would come up now anyway?
It's not in the, it's not in the preliminary layout.
Well, in reading the counter, I guess we call it a counter-proposed resolution,
one of the arguments was we were asking for variances from 50 to 40. All I'm saying is, we don't need to do that.
You could do without it, you're saying?
We could do without it. I think Allison can confirm that, but why do that? It would give the neighbors more room in the back. The second thing, since the board is going out there, that I would appreciate if they would look at is, the other variance that we requested was a front yard variance. As the board knows, any corner piece of property has two front yards. Even though this is a private road, the, it creates a corner piece for Mrs. Perna's house. So if you look at the proposed map, we could eliminate, there's 10 feet on each side of the road. The road is 20, and then there's 10 feet on each side where there are mountable curbs. If we eliminated that, then it wouldn't be a 25-foot setback anymore, it would be a 45-foot setback. And pursuant to the suggestion of the Planning Department, we put on the map a 10-foot buffer on the property side where the, what is it, Pine Landing subdivision is, so that those people would not be adversely affected by cars going back and forth, and the Planning Department suggested a buffer with trees and so forth. If that buffer was made to five feet, lessened to five feet, then we'd be at 50 feet, and we wouldn't be talking about variances. I don't know if the, but the board wants to consider that, but again, look at it and see what the best thing is for the, not only us, but for the surrounding neighbors.
Well, the board members who want to go out there, again, will go out there. If there are alternatives or changes that you feel, Mr. Tramaco, will be in your clients' interests, you're free to discuss those with the Planning Department, and if they're on board with it, and they want to incorporate it into their approval resolution, then we'll, that'll be brought to us on, hopefully, July 18th, along with the denial resolution if, in its current form or as amended. The only thing I would just ask is that both the approval resolution, as it's going to appear on our calendar then, and the denial resolution, as it's going to appear on our calendar then, be given to the board members sufficiently in advance of July 18th, so that we don't have a repeat of this, that we can hopefully vote on it on July 18th, up or down, one way or the other, and that'll be that. So I think everybody wants to do it.
Just one final, one final thing. If you think about it, if this was an interior plot, in other words, all the lots faced Landing Avenue, the side yard required, minimum side yard would be 16 feet. Because we are putting the road in, albeit a private road, we have the situation of it being a corner lot. If it wasn't a corner lot, all we need is 16 feet, and right now, it's showing us 25. Just a thought.
Okay. Did you want to?
I got a question while you're there, please. Your front yard setback, you went from 50 to 40. If you want to go to 50, you can, you're saying?
I can. I don't have to ask anybody to do that.
Okay. On both lot two and lot three?
Three lots. Three lots.
Two, three, two, three, and four.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
But, excuse me, but that would mean also that the houses would go back, so it'd be closer to the other neighbors on the other street.
That's right. It would have, I don't know, I think, an effect on the adjoining neighbors, because now the setback in the rear would be 10 foot less, even though the smallest lot would still give us 95 feet in the rear.
I think what he's saying is that it's moved forward as an accommodation to the neighbors in the rear, but he could move it back if people had issues with the variance. That's all.
Right. Exactly.
Okay. Anybody else? Finished, Miss? Anything else?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience wish to be heard on this particular matter? Okay, we have before us a motion.
We got somebody.
Oh, sorry. Come up, ma'am. Just give your name and address for the record, please, and then you can be heard.
My name is Joanne Mader. I live on White Pine Court, behind the lots. And I have to give my opinion. Unfortunately, some of my neighbors couldn't appear tonight.
Well, guess what? They're going to have a chance to come on July 18th.
They will, July 18th, and we're all against this. White Pine Court is tough making a left turn. White Pine Court is tough making a left turn, it's Landing Avenue, there are too many accidents, somebody was killed a few years ago, there's a lot of blind spots. So, you know, we all oppose this, so I'm just letting you know, it's a danger, I have children in my backyard, and this road will go right behind me, and it's just a danger. So that's my opinion, we all oppose it on White Pine Court.
Well, thank you for your comments, and anybody who wishes to come down and speak either in opposition to it, or speak in favor of it, as they choose, will be free to come down on July 18th, because Mr. Chays has a motion to recess the matter till that date, for the reasons that we've been speaking about.
Okay.
We welcome your input.
Thank you very much.
Public input, there's been a lot of conversations and telephone calls made behind the scenes on this matter.
Oh, I'm sure there were.
And, I think my concern is the residents.
I'm worried about the safety, we have children, I have grandchildren, they're playing my yard, and I really don't need a road coming behind my house.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Anybody else who wish to be heard, wishes to be heard on this particular matter?
I just got one, one quick question.
Yes, sir.
I'll see when, when I get to the site, but I can't, one, I can't see what.
Who do you want to address it to, Planning, Mr. Tramaco?
Anybody, the topography on this lot here, there you go, I can't see this.
I know the feeling.
Okay, so that'd be lot two.
Yes.
All right, so the lot two, the, the land in the back, I'm going to walk this again, but the, is this sloped?
Yes, it is.
So that's another reason why.
All, all the, all the.
That was one of the, that was one of the reasons for pushing the.
Lots forward, not back.
So that it would, it would reduce the amount of regrading.
Okay, okay, that was my question. All right, I'll take a look at that.
Anything else from any members of the board? Okay, we have before us a motion by Mr. Chays to recess this matter to the next meeting, which is the July 18th, 2018 meeting of the board, for the reasons that we've been discussing relative to site inspections and/or possible revision of the alternate resolution, and now possibly issues regarding the.
One second, Jimmy, sorry.
I actually would like to say a couple words.
Here's the mic.
I'm a small builder, I'm Art Heinrich, by the way, Kismet Homes.
You got a name and address?
Can we see name and address?
Art Heinrich, from Kismet Homes, K-H-E-I-N-R-I-C-H, and with Kismet Homes, I'm a small builder.
Just give the, your business address for the record.
155 Northern Boulevard, St. James, New York.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm a small builder, and I really don't understand what's going on here with this, I mean, I watched the April 25th meeting, and I was infuriated, you know, watching that meeting, seeing how one board member can, you know, control what's going on here, and then reading in Newsday, you know, that the attorney, you know, for the board is actually working in conjunction with the same member here, to actually put a kibosh on an application that, you don't, you have no idea what it takes to get to this point. For you to get to this point in your life as a builder, I mean, it takes leaps and bounds to get here. We used to have Frank Derubias that would hold you from getting to this point, and you would have to force your issue to get to this point, to come to this planning board without Frank Derubias's approval. And now, I'm, as a builder, I'm afraid to come to this board, because I think this board is now, it's, it's not working the way the board should be working, okay? I mean, do you know what the, like, you're, you're again, you're, you're recessing this meeting, do you know what it costs just to get to this point, that thousands and thousands of dollars, and then every time you recess a meeting, this guy's got to be paid, these people aren't getting their house, their property sold. I mean, I have no, I'm not for this application, nor am I against this application, but I know that this application was reviewed by the Planning Department, it was reviewed by engineering, DEW, highway, and everybody approved this application, okay? But where is it going? You're coming with two resolutions to this board, you're, you're, you're making mud right now, you're coming with an, one approve, one resolution that is approving, and then you're coming with another resolution that wants to deny the application. The process really should be that you should have voted for SECRE, whether you were for it or against it, and there is no environmental, and then you should have voted against the resolution. If you wanted to deny the resolution, not have it built, just deny the resolution, because you're complicating the Article 78 that's going to happen, okay? And I'll be, I'll be.
There is going to be one happening?
I'm just saying that if you deny it, probably would be one, okay? And I'm talking about me personally, I don't know what they're going to do, but me as a builder, if this woman cannot afford to do the Article 78, I personally will help fund the Article 78, okay? That's how strongly I feel about this situation.
Do you have any interest in this application?
Zero.
Okay, well, that, look, that's your right as, as a citizen, if you have money, and you feel there's a cause you want to spend your money on, that's up to you. When you're done, I'm going to respond to your comments, though.
But I, I just feel, you know, that we had a way to get around Planning if Planning wasn't on board. I mean, I'm not saying that an application should come here and be something that is really bad for the neighborhood, okay? I live next to Flag Lots, and I'm proposing on, you, as you can see, if you look at, on your agenda, you've been recessing number five, Glen Hill North, and St. James, okay? That's my application, I've been fight, was fighting with Frank Derubias for years, and I couldn't even get to the Planning Board.
Frank Derubias has been retired for a couple of years now.
You're absolutely right, but you know what, you know what?
Matter of fact, the guy that replaced him has since retired.
I'll explain to you what the impact of what a denial, of how one person who denies you the ability to build.
But arguing about what Frank Derubias did in the past doesn't really make much sense to me, because he's not working for the town, and he's retired.
You're absolutely correct, but what I want to explain to you is that, I was, I have an acre and a half.
He was a very knowledgeable man, by the way, but that's.
I have an acre and a half of land, you know, that I've wanted to subdivide for so long, okay? But you keep getting roadblocks and roadblocks, and the financial strain, and then the recession and everything, I wasn't able to get myself, that's why I haven't pushed for the subdivision to keep going forward anymore, because I wound up draining my assets to, you know, to afford my, my property and everything. What I'm just trying to say is that everything that you guys do, it's not a couple dollars, everything's a thousand, 2,000, 5,000, 10,000. It's got to end, okay? That's all I have to say.
I'm just going to respond to a couple of the things that you said, some of which I think were, could be taken as certainly offensive by people here. First thing is, I'm not going to speak for anybody else, but I've been on the Planning Board for, I think, 13 years. I don't consider myself naive, I don't, not a know-it-all, but I'm certainly aware of what it takes for an applicant or a builder to move something through the process, in the various, with the various town departments, with this board, with the Board of Zoning Appeals, with the Planning Board. So I'm very much aware of that, and, you know, I'm sensitive to it. Now, my belief here is that we need to balance the rights of the applicant and/or the builder to do what they want with their land, with the interests of the town and the residents of the town, in preserving the quality of life and protecting the environment, okay? That's got to be done on a case-by-case basis. So I don't think it's really fair to accuse the board of having a process where one person is holding up the entire board. Actually, I don't agree with that. What we have here tonight is perhaps a situation that's not the usual situation, it's a little more involved, okay? Now, as far as you saying that we're creating mud, I don't think that's correct either. As a matter of fact, other Planning Department personnel, and even other people who were planning directors, would sometimes advocate for alternate, alternate resolutions, not to create mud, but the idea is that when a resolution is supported by the Planning Department, they put in a resolution for approval and the reasons for that, okay? If everybody on the board doesn't necessarily agree with that, and sometimes that happens, it happens often, where, you know, we're not all robots, everybody has different opinions, that's why we have a Planning Board, and not just one person. So if people might be against the Planning Department's recommendation and their resolution, some people think it's a good idea to let those people have the reasons why they're against it articulated, so that if and when there's a vote on it, those who are in favor will have their reasons articulated, because those are the reasons if the Planning Department is recommending approval, will be in their memorandum, but also those who are opposed, so they don't have to, on the fly, state what their reasons are for opposing it, because it is good practice, if you're going to vote no, to say why, if the Planning Department is voting yes. So they don't have to do it on the fly, the language is already worked out, and it doesn't mean that everybody has to agree with that. The Planning Department wants approval, they're putting forth an alternate resolution, it's been very clear, it's been made clear on the record, that they're for approval, and they're only having this alternate resolution on at the request of a board member, and they're only preparing it as a strictly an ministerial and administrative function, that their position is for. So the fact that we're now giving the members a choice to have two different resolutions, so that those who are opposed, and that doesn't apply to just this case, it applies to any case, really, where there's going to be some, you know, not agree, non-agreement on the whole thing, I don't think it's, it's really something that should be resulting in the.
So then when a resolution comes before the board, you know, to deny it, how does one bring an Article 78 properly against that?
Well, I can't, I can't give you legal advice, you know what I mean?
I'm not an attorney, I just, you know, see that, you know, the applicant comes before you, for one thing.
I'm just going to explain, I'm going to answer your question. If an applicant comes here, and their application is denied, they have the right to go consult with counsel, to pursue whatever remedies they're right, they, they can pursue, if one of those remedies is an Article 78, it's up to them to consult with their counsel, and their counsel will advise them how, why, where, and when to do that. It's not for me to comment on it to you.
Okay, well.
But I thank you for your comments.
No problem, thank you.
And hopefully, July 18th, this will be voted on, and it'll, those who want, who are in favor of it, will vote in favor of it, those who are against it, will vote against it, and that'll be that. Yes, ma'am, you want to speak?
Sure, don't give us your phone number now.
Yes, Nick, just name and address, please.
Rosanna Perna, 452 Landing Avenue, Smithtown.
Are you the applicant?
Yes, I am.
You're owning the property?
Yes.
Okay. You can take that out, or you can leave it right there.
Whatever's good for you.
All right.
Could you just call your last name for me, please?
P-E-R-N-A.
Thank you.
I just heard you, Chairman, say that this is normal, what's happened to my land.
No, I didn't say that.
That it's nothing unusual.
I didn't say that it's normal, I said, I didn't say it's normal, I said, actually, I think I said this is a little more involved than most other applications.
I, I've, I've been told in 50 years, that my lawyer's been doing this, this has never happened, with this other proposition coming out, okay?
Oh, I, well, I'm going to tell you that that's not correct, because I've voted on cases where there have been alternate resolutions. Let me just tell you, it's not the usual thing, where there was an alternate resolution. However, I don't really think it's a bad thing, because again, everybody doesn't always vote together, sometimes it's three to two, sometimes it's four to one, and it's good for purposes of creating a proper record and certainty, that if somebody is for something, the reasons why are articulated clearly, and if someone is against something, the reasons why are articulated clearly, so that if there is legal action down the road, one way or the other, somebody else looking at this, i.e. a judge, can exactly see why those who supported it did so, and the reasons for, and the reasons against.
Well, I disagree with you, because I started five years ago with, yes, the two people that have retired. So it's, it's, it's taken a long, and I've had to borrow money to defend myself, which we did win, I mean, the reporter should write that, we did win, I think the truth was, didn't come out in the last two articles. We wouldn't be here if the judge wouldn't have said that you can't, you can't, you couldn't do what you were trying to do. So now, the neigh, my neighbor left, but I wanted to address what she's opposing. Before I put my land for sale with the real estate, I knocked on the Lyons' door, okay? And I said, I'm willing to divide my land to whatever, her, she's right next door to the Lyons', and I told Mrs. Lyons, I'm willing to divide my land, because I rather, I respect my neighbors, okay? I offered my land to them. And that's not a public road that she's talking about, that's a private road, she's not going to have traffic down there. There's a fence, there's a six-foot fence, there'll be a buffer, so that doesn't fly, okay? I have a circular driveway where this road is going to come in, it's already, the curb is cut, I already use it, she's blaming the death of a young, she quoted, the death of a young lady that died by the park at 2:00 AM in the morning. Was that a traffic situation? No, I don't think so. And she actually, one meeting, I forget the date, she actually came with that petition, it was the poor girl's funeral that day, and she used that, that it didn't apply to traffic on Landing. So, you know, this is, I'm, I'm really upset, it's causing me health problems, because I don't know what's going on, this is a small, three houses, okay? It, it just, everybody's making a big deal out of nothing. So I just want to go on record, it's causing me a lot of health problems, and, by the way, when you come to walk, there's a lot of poison ivy, have boots on, have long pants, you know, it's a beautiful piece of property, but like I said, I offered it to my neighbors, I did respect them. And it's like she's saying, traffic, what traffic? It's three homes. My house is existing, my front yard on Landing is over 80 feet, so you're picking on a technicality, that's the corner. It's, it's on paper, yes, because you, you're making my house part of the subdivision, but it's an existing home, which the headlines always says, four new homes, it's not, it's three new homes. So, anyway, I, I, I said my piece.
I've only here for two years, so I, I wasn't here from '14, and I really like to, before I vote on anything, Mr. Tramaco knows, since I've been here, I like to walk every piece of property before I vote.
I will walk with you.
So, and be my pleasure.
I'll just show you.
I'll bring you the coffee, and we'll walk it together.
And like I say, wear boots, because there's a lot of poison ivy, and I'm allergic to poison ivy. But I'll walk with anybody, for my land.
And you see, you see who the five board members are, but everybody has a Planning Board ID, no one's going to show up without that.
I, that's why I came, to look at everybody's face.
We all have Planning Board IDs given to us by the town that we will bring.
Somebody did walk before the last meeting.
I was there, your, your husband let me on property.
I said, who was it? He's like, I don't know the town, I didn't know who it was, so that kind of upset me that, you know, but you, you know, I'll give you my phone number, and I'll be available.
Yeah, well, for your convenience, ma'am, and I guess for also for the convenience of the board members, so they don't go over there for nothing, Mr. Tramaco has offered, after the meeting, to give us the phone number.
Yes, yes, yes.
He probably could give it to the Planning Department, probably be the best people to give it to.
Okay, okay.
Then any board member can contact them.
Yes.
All right, and then contact you to make an appointment, so that you're there to let them in, so that they don't have to go there for nothing, or go there when you're not there.
Right.
And hopefully, between now and July 18th, everybody who wants to go there.
Yeah, I was hoping they would be over tonight, when this is, my sugar's 300, I can't bring it down, I was really hoping.
Everybody who wants to go there can go there.
We're going to get there.
And, and, and the language in the resolutions can be worked out, and then on July 18th, there'll be a vote.
I got the packet Monday, I don't understand why you didn't have enough time to do this. I went down, they gave me the packet.
You know, I can't speak for all the members of the board, people have jobs.
Especially you guys wrote it up, I mean, now you want to make changes.
People have jobs, sometimes during the day, that they have to work, and they get it at night, so I can't speak for other members of the board, but they requested time to inquire further with counsel about the word.
It's another delay that really is killing me, but the other thing, I usually watch it on my computer, there are times that this, this meeting looks like a zoo, and I can't even hear what anybody is saying, you know?
Well, that, the second, the first comment, I don't know about that one, I wasn't even going to bother responding to that.
Yeah, whatever, whatever, it just, I can't.
But the second one, as far as the technical problems are concerned, if the people who are watching on the computer can.
It's not technical, it's like everybody's speaking at one time. I, I remember one meeting, Barbara, the one that you left me hanging up in the air, Barbara was trying to, you know, what does that mean, and let's, I want to do a proposition, nobody paid attention to, to this woman, what she was saying. The meeting before I had to sue, you were trying to say, what does that mean, you know, and then I think it was the lawyer said, it leaves them in limbo or something. And then I think it was the lawyer said, it leaves them in limbo or something, but you were gonna propose something, nobody paid attention to you.
No, actually, I was the one who actually said, I didn't, wasn't going to propose a, a resolution.
You were gonna do something.
I, I was the one who said that, does it mean that?
What does it mean?
That the homeowner is left in limbo or something like that.
Yeah. And then you say, can I do something, or?
No, I don't think she asked to do anything, actually, maybe you have a different memory of it than she does.
I know, you go back and see, I thought you were gonna say, can I?
But again, as we say, that's all, as we say, water under the bridge, right? That's the last hearing, it's gonna be adjourned, I think, to July 18th. The parties are gonna have a chance to go there, the board members are gonna have a chance to go there, should they wish to. The wording of the resolutions is going to be finalized, and then if, if there's a vote on the secret negative declaration, that is yes, meaning that SECRE, we don't need an environmental impact statement, then each board member will be free to vote, approval or denial of the merits of the case, and the chips will fall where they may, as they say.
Okay.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chairman? The planning department usually prepares the packets and sends them out, either the Thursday afternoon or Friday morning, before the planning board meeting, and then it'll be sent to the attorneys or the applicants the, the following day. Is, is that kind of a timeframe acceptable, or would you prefer that it be sent earlier?
Would it be possible, under the circumstances that we have here, that we just move it back a week? Would that be too much trouble?
As long as the resolutions are prepared, we can, we can provide that.
Get early, the better, sometimes.
We may, we may have to, you know, for the, we usually send it all as one package.
Usually we get it, usually we get it on Friday afternoon for the Wednesday meeting.
Yes.
Under these circumstances, it would be possible for you to generate it by the Wednesday before, one week before.
Sure.
It's only a couple more days, but now everybody has it.
If something was a change, you could just send it to the email, okay?
Everybody has it a week before, all right? And then, so we get it a week before, and the applicant's attorney will get it the next day.
The following day, yes.
Correct. That's, I think, if you could do that, give everybody a little more time, so that again, when we come back on July 18th, it can be put to a vote on the merits, and everybody can vote the way they choose to vote.
Sure, no problem.
Okay, well, Mr. Tramaco on that one? You'll get it to Wednesday before?
We'll get it to Thursday before, we'll get it to Wednesday before.
As soon as I get it, I'll be reading it, so.
All right. We'd like to put this to bed.
Well, if you get it to Thursday before, that gives you six days.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Allison. Just a couple more days, I think will give everybody a little more time, and allow us to hopefully vote on it on July 18th. So.
Motion.
With that being said, we have still Mr. Chays' motion.
Motion to recess.
For recess to July 18th, right? Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
No.
All right.
No, I'm not opposed, no.
Your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Opposed, none?
I'm in favor.
Right.